Welcome, everyone. Waiting for the prompt on the television monitor. All right. Is that a go, Jesse?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Welcome, everyone, to Tuesday's November 13, 2018, special meeting located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And we are starting at 4:30. For the record, all members of council are present. We do have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting, so we're going right into the agenda items. We have three agenda items for tonight. We do have a resolution approving the risk management reserve fund policy. We have a report and provide feedback on a fiscal emergency plan mitigation measures. And we have a fiscal year 2018-19 general fund allocation for public tourism improvements. And with that, we'll take public comment and open up for public comment at this time, and then we'll go into our agenda items. Welcome. Come on up, Joan. Thanks for coming.
There's so few people. Hi, my name is Joan Solu, and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Speaking to you in this portion of public comment as a person representing the Historical Society of Morro Bay. And you have an item on your agenda regarding funding for tourism and beautification. And we have an item on that item, and that is Franklin Riley Park. We have been working for a number of years, since 2014, to establish a park in honor of Franklin Riley, who is our European founder. He laid out the grid that most of you know today as the layout of our town. The grid that he laid out is still in existence, and that mapping was used as the city built up during the time of World War II and beyond. So it has been part of our past, it is part of our present, and will continue to be part of our future. So we would like to honor the man who laid that out. The park you may know is on the end of Olive Street and -- and all of a sudden, it just dropped out of my mind.
Wow.
Olive Street -- well, it's at Olive and Moro and Olive and South. And at the end of South Street and at the end of Olive, where they meet the park, there are two very large and very old eucalyptus trees believed to have been planted by Franklin Riley himself, as that is the very edge of his homestead, his original homestead. We'd like to mark those trees and preserve that area for future use for the community. And it is widely used by tourists and visitors to our community for everything from dog walking to Fourth of July celebrations and whatnot. Now, speaking as a resident, I will not be able to stay for your next meeting. I have a plan. So I'd just like to address the visitor center issue. When you're addressing the mobile visitor center and the trolley, $40,000 to $50,000 would purchase the trolley, but I think it would take just about that much to bring it up to speed. You'd have to have some type of mobile ADA access to it if you were going to move it around. The ADA compliance on it is probably my biggest concern, and also the lack of a restroom, which, as we know, it can be -- if it can be located anywhere, it can be located next to a city restroom, right? But that is a big concern. The other thing I would caution you about is the aquarium area. While it's down on the Embarcadero, and it is right where the heart of the visitors are, I would caution you, in a time when the city is looking for ways to increase revenue, about using a very important building that could generate revenue for the city in a short term while you look at the aquarium in the long term. So I would caution you about looking for maybe a short-term lease there instead of something that would cause you to cost more money, even though a visitor service can create money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Anybody else for public comment? With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks. Thanks for covering both of those items, and we welcome those. With that, we'll -- public comment is closed. We'll move on to the first item on agenda. This is the adoption of Resolution Number 8918, approving the risk management reserve fund policy. And Ms. Callaway, are you leading us off on that? Or Mr. Collins, are you teeing everything up? Nope, we're going straight to Jen. Okay, thank you.
Straight to me. Thank you, welcome. Good evening. This is kind of a continuation of our ongoing financial policies discussion and the timeline and agenda that we kind of mapped out late August and early September time period. And this is specifically focused on the risk management fund. We did the other internal service funds about a month ago, left this one out separately so we could do a little bit more analysis on what would be an appropriate fund level to recommend to the council. The policy itself follows a similar format. We do have attached a resolution which rescinds Resolution 32-15, which was the previous policy on the risk management reserve policy, and then an exhibit, which is the new proposed draft policy. We're proposing a minimum target level of $500,000 or a minimum level of $500,000 and a target level of $650,000. And we base that on a variety of different factors. So within the risk management fund, we pay our annual insurance premiums out of that, our liability insurance, our workers' comp insurance, earthquake insurance, flood insurance, all of the insurance coverage that we have. So that fund supports those costs. When we are developing the budget, we have estimates of what those premiums will be. They do change after we have adopted budget or we get more refined numbers. So part of the reserve fund could be used to kind of smooth out any increases that we didn't know, or if we were a little off with our estimates during the budget development process. It also goes to cover claims that are not under our insurance policy, that the CJPIA does not cover. We use money in the risk management fund to support, you know, personnel investigations or claims investigations, any kind of claims that the city would be held accountable for and would not be covered by our insurance provider. We went back and looked at about nine years' worth of history. We pulled out those kind of costs to see what the average was each year to kind of work towards what we would recommend to the council. We found about an average of $50,000, $50,000 of those kind of costs that would hit the fund. It really could range year to year from about $200,000 to just, you know, a matter of $10,000 or $20,000. So it's a pretty wide range, again, depending on what's going on. The very nature of risk management is you don't know what to expect. So it is kind of -- we used the best metrics we had. We did look at other cities to see what they recommend and tried to benchmark against those. We only had a handful of responses to our survey on our listserv for finance. A lot of them used actuarial reports for their claims history. We don't have that available to us, so weren't able to use that for our basis. The ones that we did see were upwards of about $1 million. But again, that was based on some actuarial reports, and for a city of our size and probably our capacity, that seemed a bit high to us. We felt more comfortable in that $500,000 to $650,000 range, based on the claims that we know are outstanding or have potential to need funding for going forward in the future. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. We'll open up for questions. Red, do you want to start us off with questions?
Yes, I do not have any questions.
Okay, Matt?
Yes, one question I have, Jen, reading over the report in terms of the amount that we have in the current fund and then to do the target of $650,000. About how long would that take, do you think, to build that up?
So the policy says within three years. So if you approve the policy as-is, when we do the 1920 budget adoption, we would have to outline a three-year plan for how to fund that, and that would be -- it's an internal service cost, so departments will contribute towards that each year until we build up to either the minimum of the target. We'd come back with a target proposal of $650,000, and council could direct to go closer to $500,000.
Okay, great. John?
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate that. Couple of questions for you, real quick. How are the allocations, internal transfer determinations made by department? Is it based upon actual history, looking back at claims, or total dollar amount of the department budget, or what?
We've kind of followed past practice this year in doing the budget. We're going to -- we're working on right now, as part of our year-end audit, of going through and determining actual workers' comp expenses by department, so we can do by percentage. Same with the liability, what makes sense based on employees, number of employees by department. Some of the insurance coverage is the Harvard Department. I believe they pay more for flood insurance based on their location. It varies on the type of insurance policy.
So if one department had an unusually bad exposure prior year, their assessment next year might be high based upon that, and could that affect the remainder of their budget?
It could. I think another one that's specific to the Harvard Department is watercraft insurance, because they're the only ones with watercraft. If they have particularly high incident rate one year, then it usually takes about two years for premiums to either go up or down based on actuals.
Then I had a question as to the -- I read the policy with regard to how we're able to utilize funds, and I believe that has to come to council for allocation. How are we protected against the utilization of some of these cash funds to do things that aren't related to risk-related issues, like capital budget items that might be outside of the realm of risk mitigation?
So that would be part of typically the budget development process, but it really could happen at any time. If there is a capital need that came up and we were looking for a funding source, if you had above the minimum level of funding in this -- in the risk reserve, we could offer that as a potential funding source. And there's always at council's discretion to go below that and then come back with that three-year plan to go back up to the minimum funding. So as capital needs arise, whether or not they're risk management-related, we could always use money and then bring it back up to that point over a three-year period.
Okay. And then, could you, for me, tell me how we got from a recommendation maybe two years ago to go down to 100, now back to 500 or 600? Was there something that occurred in two years that -- not that I don't support the amount, but I'm just wondering what happened internally with regard to that? If you had any history, I know you weren't maybe here, Jen, but...
I think, from what I've heard in conversations, there was -- this is a balancing act of keeping enough money in reserve to feel comfortable that you're covered should something, a claim arise, and balancing work that's needed throughout the city. So that's where you've got to find that comfort level, and I think maybe another council member might speak more to it.
Yeah. Thank you. More for the community. I think I knew the answer, but I had questions. My last question is, that's a lot of cash. I assume it's invested in some of our pooled investments. Is there ability to use that cash for cash flow, operational cash flow issues with regard to this policy, or is that set within the fund and it stays there? Without council action, I mean. But can you do transfer in, transfer out based upon operational cash needs?
So all of our money is invested as kind of one pool. It's not really a transfer. You know, we have an inlay for in a variety of different CDs. But in terms of utilizing, we don't have something, a bank account, that says risk management, right? So it's just pooled as one investment fund.
I guess I meant, is it liquid? And would it be considered liquid, and could you use it for operational needs if your cash flow dipped and you had a need?
Our portfolio right now is about 78% liquid.
Got it. Thank you.
Marla?
Okay, sure. Thank you. Well, I had the opportunity to meet with Jen this afternoon, so I had some of my questions answered already, and I had some of the same questions that John just had. So I have one left, and that is, if we were to lower the fund balance or the target fund balance, and we had a claim that exceeded it, do we have other resources or other funds that we could tap into to cover that?
Yeah, so the first likely source would be the general fund emergency reserve. That would be the most obvious one to go to, should we not have enough money in here to cover any claim.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I met with Jen as well. I don't have any questions at this time, but ready to start on discussion, and I'll just rotate down to Marla, if you want to lead us off in discussion.
Well, I really appreciate your taking this on, and I was concerned that the schedule you have for all of the other policies might not be met, but thank you for all of your hard work. And I guess you mentioned the fact that it's a balancing act. And so with that, keeping that in mind, I think we have established a number of fund balances in a number of different accounts that we never had before, like a capital improvement account and vehicle replacement. And so we have set aside, I think, a fair amount of money in cash reserve or in fund balances and in reserves if we need it. So I would like us to consider perhaps lowering the recommendation, and I would throw out, just for purposes of discussion, a minimum level of $350,000 and a target level of $500,000, which is what we had previously to reducing it to the $100,000. So that's kind of where I am at at the moment, but I would love to hear what others have to say and can change my mind.
All right, thanks, Marla. John?
So my sense is that the real issue is the looming risk that's waiting out there that's undefined. And although you've looked back at a nine-year history and the range is somewhere between $50,000 to $200,000 as a potential hit, there's always that looming one that we don't know about that could hit us. And I know we do have the general fund as a backup that we maintain pretty much on the line, but when I look at the 10-year plan and where that might be going, I do have concerns about that. I too support lowering it. I think 500 may be a little bit high, but reevaluating in a year and looking at, or in two years or annually, to look at the potential for changing the targets. But for now, I would support Marla's recommendation as well. A, I think you said 300 and...
350.
350 and 500 max. Yeah, I would support that as well. Thank you.
All right. Matt?
I appreciate the points you guys made, and it does make the question when you brought it up, John, when we lowered it back down to $100,000. But knowing that about our 10-year forecast and looking at this as it's going out over the years, I think I too could appreciate the 350 to 500,000, because looking at those dates, I also am concerned, knowing where our budget constraints are now, in three years, where we're going to get 350,000 from. That's serious, considering, as you bring up, Marla, it's those other funds that we want to tuck away money for. But with all that said, I would, I could go along with the 350 to 500 cap.
Thanks. Thanks, Matt. Red?
I don't have any reason to either agree or disagree with my colleagues, so I'm just happy to go along with your recommendation.
Thanks, Red. I just, I wanted to, thanks for all the conversations on this. I wanted to respond a little bit. How did we get to the 500 to the 100 and back? And first of all, Jen, thanks again for bringing this to us. As I said earlier today, I'm excited to see this. Pardon me. I would say my first budget year on this particular item, as we were looking for different funds. My question at the time was, why do we have $500,000 in our risk management as a target level, and was trying to understand the budget? And at the time, there really wasn't the data to provide why we had it there, and it took a couple of years before it was changed from 500 down to the 100 area. And I think it was, you know, balancing act to some degree. I appreciate the level of detail that we have tonight, but at the time, I think maybe it's the same conversation we're having now that we had then, with a little bit added twist to it in the response, in respect to, we're adopting and instituting budget policies that we haven't before, and many of those budget policies, thank you, Scott, and Jen and your staff, are instituting reserve fund balances, and we were doing that across the board. So I, that's great. We do need to have, establish those protections. I have the kind of caution, as my colleagues have shared, about lowering the number and managing that risk. I also did look at the general plan, excuse me, the general fund emergency reserve as one way to go to that. Historically, that's really all we had. So I, my number that I was talking with Jen earlier today was a minimum level of 250 and a target level of 500. That's where I came to. I know my question, and I'll say it, you know, for the benefit for all of us to understand, because we, I think we do want to, we do value staff's input on this, and I just want to, and my, one of my questions earlier today, what's your comfort level? And Jen, if you can respond to that, you can let us know what your comfort level is, not to put you on the spot, but, I mean, that's what we need to understand. You've given us this guidance, and I think it's fair to understand what your position on that.
I, you know, I feel pretty comfortable at the $500,000 mark. If we get much below into the 200 range, I start to get uncomfortable, knowing that we already have potentially $300,000 out there and possible claims that we would need to fund. So 500 is really kind of where I'm finally feeling like, okay, we're, the city's good, we're protected, and we have another source to go to.
Yeah. Thanks for that. And I, as I was talking through some of this throughout earlier years on budgeting and where we can come up with additional revenues, I just, some of my comments in past that I would like to share tonight is that having that, let's say, $500,000 as a target or minimum, I would like to understand that that we have protection, that gives us a line item for protections, but are we freezing up money that we're not doing the type of repairs, cracks in sidewalks, safety equipment for employees, any of the number of things that fall under the risk management area? Then if we're locking that money up, then we're not, all we're doing is saving the money for that day instead of proactively going after those things, which is some of my comments. So that's the balancing act, and there's no magic wand to that. Maybe it's one of those things where we do review it, but I'll leave my comments as it is. Maybe there's some deliberation on where we land as far as the number, but it seems like there is some consensus to have a discussion on what that minimum and target level is. I know I threw mine out, which was a little bit lower than has been proposed, but I'm ready to go forward from there and would open it up for more conversation.
I just, I had a comment, Mr. Mayor, to what you had said. I appreciate that background and your resolve with regard to being proactive and taking care of risk issues that need to be fixed with capital now, in addition to having this available. My thought is, it would have been nice to have a CalPERS liability fund established when the discount rate suddenly changed, and will continue to change, and, oh my gosh, we don't. And now we are struggling significantly with an unknown that has hit us, and if we had the ability to plan actuarially for that prior, which we didn't, it would have been nice to have that money ready to pay now, would have avoided interest costs, et cetera, et cetera. So I liken it to that, and I had one additional question. Is there an opportunity to buy another layer of risk protection outside of the JPIA or CJPIA? In other words, an umbrella policy that would be above that, that would provide coverage? I just thought of that as we were thinking. I do that in my own business and...
I think that would really be a question for our risk management, and she's not available tonight, so we could get back to you on that.
Yeah. That might be one way to help mitigate some of the dollars by buying. Those are usually fairly inexpensive. However, so I'll just end my comments by saying, I liken it to the CalPERS issue, and I like to be prepared with 300,000 potentially looming. I would not feel comfortable having a reserve level less than that, and so 350 to 5, I'm really comfortable with.
Yeah, if I could just add, that was actually the reason why I picked 350,000. It was because of the possible 300,000, and so I wanted to make sure that we would be covered for that and still have some left. So that was my rationale for the 350.
Okay, I would take a motion then, unless there's any other discussion.
No, go ahead.
I will move the adoption of Resolution 8918 rescinding Resolution Number 32-15 and establishing the risk management reserve fund policy with a target level of $350,000 with a maximum target...
That's the minimum.
Minimum of $350,000 and a maximum of $500,000.
Target.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. Davis. Further discussion on that? And clarity from Jen, are you okay with that? Was that clear in the motion?
Minimum level of 350, target level of 500,000.
Okay, all right, good. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. All right, thank you for that. Anything else do we need? We can move on to the next item? Thank you. Next item is receive report and provide feedback on the fiscal emergency plan mitigation measures. Ms. Callaway, thanks.
Thank you. So this is another continuation item. We've been working on a development of a fiscal emergency plan. Back in September, we brought forward this concept to, along with, as kind of a two-chapter book, if you will, the short-term fiscal emergency chapter, and then the longer-term fiscal sustainability or fiscal resiliency piece. We felt that we could get through an emergency plan with this seated council, so we've been bringing this to you in pieces. You'll see it one more time as kind of a final written plan in terms of a short-term fiscal emergency plan. So keeping in mind that, you know, this, we've identified five triggers. We brought those back to you in September. Those would initiate kind of an immediate response, and that's the concept of an emergency plan. So we worked again with our employee budget group. We brought these proposed six mitigation measures to our CFAC committee for their thoughts and opinions to share with you. They had consensus and agreed with the six as they were proposed. So we're looking for feedback from the council on those six. We have a hiring chill. That does not mean a hiring freeze. It just means that if there are vacant positions, they're not automatically recruited for. It goes through the city manager to do some assessment of if we can hold them vacant for any period of time to achieve some savings, reorganize or something like that. Again, the goal is short-term savings and preservation of future options. Travel chill, kind of the same sort of thing, that we're not going to say no to any training, but there will be an assessment of the need based on if it's a long-distance travel training. We might come back with CIP deferrals or reprioritizations. That really leads into if there's something that city staff could do in maybe a enterprise fund capital project. We might delay a general fund capital project and push off to, you know, a one-water project or something like that, if city staff is qualified to do that, to achieve some general fund savings. One-time operating cost reviews would really do an assessment of those as they come forward and make sure they're absolutely necessary, or if they can be deferred. And then use of fund balance is always a last option for us if we need to as a short-term measure. And then we left a vague kind of other curtailments as appropriate, depending on what the situation is and what expenditures are coming forward at that time. So again, the employee budget group was on board with these. The CFAC committee agreed with those. Consensus agreed to those. And if council agrees to those, then we'll come back in December with a final written draft plan for you to review. That'll put this all together and make it clear what this chapter of the resiliency plan is before we delve into the larger piece next year.
All right, Jen, thanks for that, and we'll start off with questions. And Marla, do you want to start us with questions on this one?
Well, you answered my first question, which was the difference between a freeze and a chill. The only other question I actually have concerns the issue of any kind of changing, change in staffing levels. And I'm just curious to know if the citizen or the employee budget committee consider that, or would you consider that more of a long-term kind of a fix?
Once we get into either eliminating positions, freezing positions, furloughs, anything like that, that moves us into that longer-term fiscal resiliency or sustainability piece. There's more conversations to be had with the employee groups about that. This is really that kind of knee-jerk reaction. Something has happened. We're having low revenues for some reason. We need to do an assessment, but have a mitigation measure and tackle, will we do that?
So how do you define short-term? I mean, what would be considered short-term versus long-term when you would consider some more drastic measures?
That's a good question, and that came up at our first CFAC meeting when we brought the triggers back. And at that time, their recommendation was to really define what that is. So we're still working on drafting this as a full plan for the next discussion, but, you know, it's really 90 days or less by definition, something very short-term that just gives you time to make an assessment. Is this a longer-term problem? Is there a reason? Highway one is closed, so maybe you don't need to go into hiring. Highway one is closed, so maybe you don't need to go until hiring freezes because of that or, you know, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Jen, also for this. Appreciate it very much. And I appreciate the employee group being involved in, in helping us through this. I think of The Big Chill, which was a great movie and when I saw hiring chill and travel chill, I was reminiscing. Anyway, item number four for me, I digress, huh? Item number four for me, in, in my experience as a manager, when we had these kinds of issues, when I managed large healthcare facilities, we had not a one-time operating cost review, but we had ongoing cost reviews during the full period of the downturn. So my one question would be, did, was there any discussion about an ongoing operating cost review as opposed to just a one-time, we'll look and see as opposed to, we're going to reevaluate routinely each month during the time to see if there are further operating changes that need to occur?
We're really focused on the one-time ones, thinking that they were the special projects during the year. So for example, in this year, we, we have a fee consultant onboard doing a fee study. Had we not entered into that contract, we might want to hold off on doing that. And that's a more significant cost savings than some of the monthly ongoing costs. Our monthly ongoing costs are pretty minimal at this point in terms of copying, postage. There's not a significant amount to save there, but it's not a bad idea to look at that. We shouldn't exclude it necessarily. So we, I can add that in here. That's the decision of council.
Did you, did you discuss like an across-the-board cut of 10% in budgets that would be meant? I mean, something like that or 5% to base, based upon the magnitude of the issue? Or was it just take a look, see what we can get and...
Yeah. Again, keep in mind that this is the short-term response. It was, what are some immediate things? And I think that fee schedule is a, is a good example. Had we not entered into that contract and started that service, that would be a very quick, you know, $60,000 that we could save and not spend. We're going to get more from that than some of the little pieces ongoing that we could cut each month, if any, when we look at some budgets that are pretty tight as it is. So those, you know, flat 10% across the boards would probably move you more into that resiliency phase and that longer term.
And my last question, I assume your answer would be the same as you just gave me. And I always hesitate to say it, but you know, we also at times when they were major issues, had wage and salary freezes and not dissimilar to Marlese's question, but was that discussed and when would that possibly be a consideration or...
Not discussed as this component. It would be part of the resiliency piece.
Thank you.
Matt?
Sure. You've answered so many of the questions, but in terms of the timeliness of the short-term and long-term, Jen, when issues would come arise and this employee group or the city manager would meet, that can be done pretty much on the fly and meet within the council's meeting schedule within a month every two weeks? So is that kind of how the timeframe would look, that it would be able to be brought to council very quickly?
Yeah. So that was another recommendation of CFAC and we're going to work on language to incorporate into the final plan. Really, this is thought to be kind of a cafeteria menu, if you will. So a trigger has happened, the council has in theory approved the mitigation measures. If there's something that doesn't fit in that timeline, the city manager, if we work this into the language of the plan, would have discretion to say, I've enacted a hiring chill. Come to you at the next council meeting and say, this is what I've done because this trigger was met. If it can wait to the next council meeting, then, you know, that would be the preference is to say, this trigger, we've identified this trigger has been met. This is my proposed selection off the cafeteria menu list.
And I guess looking at those trigger points, that's when something could segue from a short-term issue to a long-term issue as those things are worked out?
It would certainly start the conversation of, you know, we're doing this, but doing some analysis further to see if we need to move into that next phase.
Red?
Thanks. On the, the two consecutive quarters of declining revenues, I understand that sales, tax, DOT and property tax are our major revenue sources, but is property tax really a meaningful measure in this context?
Good question.
Yeah, that is a great question. We picked those because they were tied to the COLA increases in the MOUs and it made sense if we were going to give to staff based on revenue increases and if we were going to hold back, it would be tied to the same. Sales tax and DOT are obviously more economically sensitive and going to be a little bit stronger indicators for us. But again, because property tax was in the MOUs, we just wanted to be consistent.
I guess my concern would be that if we have the, the two going down and the property tax not going down, would that make any difference in how we apply the triggers?
We don't have to have them all be as a total. It could be two of the three.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
Okay. I don't have any questions at this time, so I'll open up for discussion. Red, you want to start us off on discussion? I'll just go back and forth.
I think this is a great plan for emergencies and it's something that I have wanted to see instituted since I went to Monterey a year ago. So I'm, I'm glad we have this and it looks good to me. And I really appreciate all the levels of review that you had, including the employees. So, thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
I would agree. And then I think the one idea of doing this is having it down on paper and having a formal process. It really brings a security, not just to council, but to the community and to staff that if and when, knock on wood, emergencies would happen. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Great. Matt, thanks. John?
I'll add my accolades to those given and say a ditto. Two things that I might add would be that number four on page 14, removing one, one-time operating cost review, two, just during the crisis, an ongoing cost review. And then second, maybe establishing a target reduction. I don't know if that's in here, but if you have this disaster and you're looking and the impact is this and you have a target, it'd be nice for the council to know what the target might be and, and how to measure that against the results from these actions would be my two recommendations for adding.
Marlese?
Well, I, I concur with my colleagues' comments and I, I like John's suggestions. I really appreciate the work and the effort put into it. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks. I just have a couple of added things. It might segue on with John as well. First, thanks again, Jen, for meeting with me today. Part of our discussion was actually adding one more item to this and it was, item seven would be, once this occurs, it would trigger the next level of fiscal resiliency plan. So we don't have that yet, but when it would actually, as I look at this, as I understand this, this is, this is short-term, so this is within the fiscal year budget. So we're looking at things, okay, boom, we have to make this kind of reaction. So to do ongoing cost review may be appropriate, but if we, we just want to make a one-time look at the fiscal year budget in which we're in and if we, and it also triggered the resiliency plan, that would get us to work on, okay, if anything else happens, there are additional measures, which may include target reductions, ongoing cost reviews, et cetera, et cetera. Would that be fair to say?
I think that's fair. And I think when you're seeing this in kind of pieces, when we get this finally put together and as, as a written document that kind of outlines the flow, that certainly would be part of it, the long-term analysis and what that leads to.
Yeah. Okay. So as far as adding, so we have the triggers that are there, but the action items that are laid out, there are six, and I guess they're, the request and with discussion with my colleagues would be to add a seventh one, which would say, this would trigger, trigger the next, it's not that we would enter into the fiscal resiliency plan, but it would trigger that review.
Trigger the discussion.
Trigger that discussion, which may encompass ongoing cost review and target reduction. Would that be accurate?
Certainly can be if that's council's.
Okay. All right. So that would, that would be my only discussion for this item. And I think we've got a couple of things on the table if we want to wrap that up. Anything, any comments?
Just, I'll add the comment, just that I think whatever the issue may be that triggers it, that there's going to be some defined level of reduction necessary. It would be nice to know that even in the short-term resiliency plan. So, and I support your number six.
Or seven.
Seven. Right.
And that the target reduction, I guess I just need to understand that a little bit more and understand what, what was...
So do I.
...desired.
Because it's basically, so we have this natural disaster. It's going to impact the budget. The magnitude is $1.5 million. I'd like to know the 1.5 or .5 or 6.8 or whatever the number might be that you're going after with the implementation of the issues.
So I think if we elaborate on that example, natural disaster, $1.5 million, it would be incumbent on us to come back and say, based on these approved mitigation measures, we anticipate that we can save $30,000 from a hiring chill, we can save $20,000 from a travel chill, we're going to defer $100,000 in CIP projects or maybe re-prioritize them to some of the capital projects and use city staff while we evaluate, you know, staffing needs in the future. Ongoing operating costs, we're not going to do a contract for the fee study, that's $60,000. And then one-time use of funds of $500,000 and kind of get you to that 1.5 million. I think that's what you're asking for.
1.5 I just pulled out of the hat, but yeah.
Whatever the number is, we need to outline how we're going to get there.
Right.
That was a great exercise. So is that encompassed in this conversation, implemented into this, this document then?
I'm hearing that as a suggestion and if that's the consensus of council, we'll make that clear.
I'm recommending that it be written into this, much like Ms. Callaway just outlined.
Okay. So when we, what do you, what do you need to, to add that language in there for us tonight to understand?
If that's the consensus, I'll work on the language and maybe when you see it in the draft, if it's not acceptable, we can modify it then. That'll be in December.
Okay. It'll come back in draft? Okay. Okay. Great. All right. So there's, so there's not necessarily a motion with this one, but to just give direction based on what we've...
Correct.
And so, so just to wrap that up, we've got target reduction, we've got the review ongoing cost, added number seven to trigger the next level of fiscal resiliency plan in there. Is this what I got on my notes?
Yep. And then was there consensus on for the triggers, number five, if you want all three of the, or if you just want two of the three?
As far as the property tax, DOT, I, I would agree to that and I think to this, that's one of the, you're basically saying one of the three would be fine.
I think I heard if there were two of the three were declining over two quarters, it would...
Okay. And you're comfortable there too?
I am, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Let me just ask a follow-up question now that this issue has come up. The property tax comes in only twice a year, is that correct? So you're not going to see that. You'd be more interested in comparing it to the previous year, would you not?
So we're going, we would tie those economic reviews to our quarterly budget reports, which show first quarter to first quarter, second quarter to second quarter. So it would be if two of those three as in a comparison to prior quarters in the same, same quarter and prior fiscal years were declining.
Right. All right. Good. I just wanted to clarify what we're talking about. Thank you.
All right. If we're good with all that?
Yeah, I am. I concur.
Okay. All right. With that, thanks for all that, Jen. We can move on to the final item. Item number three is fiscal year 2018-19 general fund allocation for public tourism improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Collins, City Manager, speak on behalf of Jen Little, who's six. She's our tourism manager, so filling in for her. What we have before you tonight is recommendation for council to approve a transfer of $20,000 within the fiscal year 2018-19 T-Bid budget from the community event support funding line item to public tourism improvements. There's no overall impact to the T-Bid fund with this recommendation and just moving money within. The background for this is the city has committed five years to providing general fund to the T-Bid, kind of as we, our DOT grows, incremental increase would, would occur from the general fund over to the T-Bid, demonstrating the city's commitment to furthering our marketing and just the betterment of our marketing for, for Morro Bay as a tourist destination. So far, we've upheld that, that commitment, beginning with $60,000 in fiscal year 16-17 up to $157,000 this current fiscal year. This has been made possible by the city experiencing incremental increases in DOT over the past several years. The money that we've provided from the general fund into tourism, the substantial portion of that amount has gone towards grants for special event promoters or for events that largely occur on the shoulder season where we want to see more tourists or during the middle of the week, during peak season, again, where we're trying to see more tourists come in. Has been successful in some respects, maybe not in others, but you know, it's kind of something we try to improve on each, each year. But in this previous fiscal year, this fiscal year we're in now, council had a really kind of broad discussion about that general fund allocation, about its purpose and about maybe potential other uses that still support tourism, but maybe look at creative uses of those funds, including use of those funds for public improvements. And we all understand it's important to market this destination, but we want people to come here to, to experience it and to be wowed by their experience here. And we all know we can do a little bit better and some of our presentation quality could be improved. And so I think that was where that discussion came from. And so staff took that to heart and made recommendations to the T-Bid board when they looked at that grant allocation process and said, hey, maybe we could cut out a portion of that $20,000 to use for grants for public improvements. I mean, we're seeing that move with our community as far as the adopt, adopt Morro Bay program and maybe there's some lessons we can draw from that. The T-Bid did support that and they had a really good discussion over several meetings to review applications for public improvements in addition to all the special events that were looked at. And T-Bid was supportive of three distinct opportunities, the, the first of which was $16,000 and change for tree light installations. I think we've all heard that downtown could be improved and certainly the connection between the Embarcadero and downtown could be improved or looking at ways to do that through wayfinding. But tree lighting has been kind of on the top of mind for, for many years. So four different entities applied for funding because they were kind of limited to $5,000 maximum for grant applications. So Rotary, Morro Bay and Bloom, Chamber of Commerce and Lions Club all submitted applications to kind of combine their forces and T-Bid supported it in $16,000 amount. Just to clarify, these funds will be used to install decorative lighting on our trees in the downtown area. The city would own responsibility for that. We'll do the electrical work. We'll kind of limb up the trees, or our contractors will, and then actually do the installation and maintenance so that it looks consistent and clean throughout wherever we decide to install those. The, the second distinct application was for a $1,000 improvement to the roundabout. It is our kind of welcoming, if you will, into the community and Morro Bay and Bloom was the applicant. They've done great work with their volunteers in the roundabout. They would like to use the $1,000 to install kind of a permanent rose garden, white roses. It would improve the overall aesthetic of, of the entry point into Morro Bay. And the last was a $2,000 recommendation from T-Bid for Franklin Riley Park beautification. You heard John Solo speak about it earlier. This is a historical society of Morro Bay. The funds would be used to complete the plans for the beautification of Franklin Riley Park. They have a lot of really good ideas, really trying to bring out all the elements of Morro Bay, including the Native American aspect, the Franklin aspect, maybe doing something with the butterflies because of their nexus with the, the eucalyptus trees there. So overall, looking for support to complete the plans and take it to the next level, using the Adopt Morro Bay platform to make that happen. They, they do have plans to fundraise to make the improvements happen. They're just looking for the seed money to do, to complete the plans. So T-Bid did make that recommendation for staff to carry that forward to city council tonight. So you're really kind of looking at two different things. One is the overall concept of using general fund T-Bid money towards actual physical improvements and then these three distinct applicants who have support from the T-Bid. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. We'll start off with questions and how about Matt? You want to start us off with questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Red?
Yep.
John? Marlese?
Well, I only have one question and I'm not sure you can answer it, but I'm just curious to know if there were any applications that were not approved or is this essentially all of the ones that submitted? I'm just...
Yeah, these were, I don't know if any of the grants for special events, if some of them may have been.
Right.
But as far as the three applicants for physical improvements, they were approved. They, I think they maybe asked for different amounts of money, but, but ultimately, T-Bid did support those three applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, couple of quick questions. At the beginning of this fiscal year, during the budget portion, I asked the question about this particular item, because the resolution that we agreed to was allocating $150,000 of general fund money, and part of the discussion was eliminating that. But there's a resolution established, and I would just like to say, thanks, Red, for being thoughtful and saying, hey, you know, it's kind of last minute to be thinking about that, so we, we followed through with that, that resolution, but part of that discussion was, we were going to have a discussion with the T-Bid, or at least have them understand that we need to have a, the council needs to have the discussion on whether or not we continue with that, because it was 150 going up to 300 was the commitment. And part of that discussion then was, it would be nice to be investing that, those funds in our product, very much like what's being discussed tonight. Are we, are we going to be investing that in lighting, or the roundabout, streetscapes, all those things, the product in which people come, come to here? So is the T-Bid aware of that, and where, have, have there been enough discussion to, to let them understand where we are, we are with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're well aware of the council discussion, and, and the other kind of things that we're contemplating, like bringing vacation rentals into the, the fold, and completing a strategic plan, the AMGEN, I mean, there's a lot of kind of things orbiting the T-Bid right now, and how to bring them forward in a cohesive fashion is not always the easiest thing to do, but they are well, well aware of that, and I think the hoteliers are, too, and, you know, we're going to have to, Jen and I are, we're going to sit down this week, but she's, she's actually quite ill, but when she comes back, sit down and kind of calendar this out, so that there's a cohesive set of agenda items that will come forward, so we're not doing it right at the budget hearing. I mean, I think that's, it's always the issue we run into, is the proper timing. So the sooner, sooner into the new calendar year, the better.
Okay. And then, oh, forgive me. Thanks for talking through this earlier today as well. So part of my questions were, the, the allocation for the, the tree lighting specifically, I was asking the question earlier, how is that done? How do we know how it gets done? What kind of lights get done? And, you know, I, I'll say this, you know, publicly as well, we have great volunteer groups, and it's really been an asset in many ways. However, volunteer groups put the lighting that exist on the trees today that are not taken care of, and in some cases were, you know, it was hard for volunteers to be able to do the right thing in the, in the, in the trees. So we've had some positive feedback and some negative feedback on the condition of the lighting, so how, how is it going to get done? How do we understand if it's for the Rotary, Morro Bay and Bloom, Chamber, and the Lions Club? How do we know these are going to get done, and to what degree of, I would say professionalism, and having the professional tools to access trees and hang things appropriately? I guess those are my questions.
Yeah, and I think we want to, we want to bring forward the spirit of volunteerism, and the fact that these, these entities stepped up to make the request, honor that, and have the city take it on, and do everything we can to facilitate and lead a really good project and installation, hopefully in time for the holidays, though I would say that's probably a stretch, but we're going to do our best. In fact, we've had support from T-Bid members themselves, who are doing some of the legwork in anticipation of this discussion tonight, to, to reach out to contractors. We're looking at tree specialists, not electricians, because they, I think they have a better understanding and appreciation for trees, and how lighting will, will work and not work from aesthetic point of view. So we're, we're owning this project as, as a city organization, so, you know, Rob Livik, myself, Mike Wilcox from Solidated Maintenance, we're, you know, we're going to take this on and own it, so make sure that it's consistently applied, and, and they'll ultimately develop a, a long-term maintenance program, so that.
Okay. I guess I have similar questions, pardon me, to my colleagues, I have similar questions for items number two and three, for $1,000 for the roundabout improvement, and the $2,000 for Franklin Riley Park, and, and all great volunteer organizations, particularly on the roundabout, I mean, the improvements from Morro Bay and Bloom, and their, their work on that has been fantastic. I, I think about, we've had different, who's the, who is the gentleman that came in? Forgive me, I, his name escapes me, from Tahoe.
Oh.
Carl Verbado. So he's, he's come to us, Joan, yep, yep, and, and, and there's been, and he's brought a wealth of information, and part of that is the branding, the consistency of what we have, and so I have some concerns on all three of these items in that regard. One is the lighting going to, going to be a done of quality, which I asked, and you responded to, great. And then if we're doing, you know, $1,000 here for the roundabout, $1,000 here, where is that consistency? And Carl was one of those that was really beating the drum on that, and it goes on to, and I could go on to the beautification for the Franklin Riley Park, and my comment there would be that 2,000 doesn't seem as though adequate to even do a planning for someone's own residence. So I'm still trying to, my question is, where are we, you know, where are we going with this, and, and kind of piecing it together, and do we want to invest in the type of project that we've been advised by professionals?
Yeah, I mean, for the Morro Bay and Bloom, I mean, they, I think they've demonstrated over the years that they're willing to, you know, it's not, they're not a one-time fly, fly-by-the-seat-of-pants organization, and they've, they've actually kind of pushed us to be more formal in how we interact, and create those levels of consistency, at least with volunteer programs, and adopt a park or adopt a thing. So I think, from that standpoint, they, they have a good understanding of what it's going to take to make the roundabout work. I think with the rose bushes, you get something more permanency. Now, I'm not, I'm not an architect, my mind is not visually oriented, so I don't know if roses are the right thing or the wrong thing, I honestly don't know. So your question is good about, well, how does that compare to what else we have? But, you know, I think Walter is a very thoughtful individual, and some ways, you kind of trust the people who are putting, putting it out there, putting their energies out there every week. With regard to the beautification, the $2,000 I think is a modest amount for what the architect or the planner would normally get, so they're looking, seeking some, some compensation, not obviously their full amount, as you stated it. You know, something of this nature typically would cost in the tens of thousands of dollars for a park of that size. How it connects back to kind of our broader park, it's a great question, we, we talked about, or council talked about during the fiscal year, 18-19 budget discussions, you know, what's driving our parks? You know, what's our vision? We don't have one. Okay, so how can we do that? Well, you can do a parks master plan, that'll cost $100,000, we don't have that kind of money. But maybe in lieu of that, we do something with Cal Poly, or we just get in turn, do something, or we start building, building the pieces towards something that's going to be long-lasting and consistent. So I don't know how this naturally falls into that. Maybe it's, it's what spurs us to do better planning overall, I, I don't know, honestly. And I, I haven't educated myself enough on what the vision is for the historical society, and how that plays into it, but it certainly appreciate the thought that they've put into it, the energies they've brought to other things in the community, and just, you know, how, how it ultimately can take that park to the next level, because it, it is a perfect location for a lot of things.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess those are part of my question discussion, but we can, we should probably open this up into discussion, and then I'll, we'll start with that. Red, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I think that this is a really smart use of a relatively small amount of money for some pretty significant visual improvements, and I like that we are leveraging city money and using volunteer staff to do the work. People who have stepped forward and said they want to do the work, and all they need is, is money to help them with the materials. And I know that Ms. Solu has done some research for the original design of the Franklin Riley Park site, so she's, she's not starting from scratch. She has a plan that, that I think Mr. Colmer developed as part of his, the rest of the residential development over there. So this money will add to that. In addition, the historical society has received additional grants toward development of the Franklin Riley Park, and Ms. Solu has mentioned several times that there will be fundraising efforts to go into that as well. The historical society does have a very comprehensive vision for that park, which I support. So I, I like that staff was proactive in taking some guidance from council during our budget discussions, and said, if this is the direction you want to go, this is what we want to do, and I just really like the fact that we are leveraging the money and using, using volunteer staff. So I support this item.
Okay, Matt?
I see your points, Jamie, that you're making, and, but then I, and so I agree, and I think in time, coming up with a cohesive plan could work in terms of putting these things into place. So that's one thing. On the other hand, looking at the diversity of the groups that are into with this $20,000, I really appreciate the diversity from different angles, points of view, that I've seen in Morro Bay, to do these enhancements for Morro Bay. So by doing that, and I think, Red, your point with staff, and for our community members, I really think that if we in turn can someday get to the point where, come up with a cohesiveness ability to do what you're saying. But for right now, I think looking at the money and where it's coming from, it's well-spent, and that very much gets some very good parts of the city involved. That's it.
Okay, thanks. John?
Thank you. I, I agree both with Matt and Red. I, I don't know how to determine the return on investment for these improvements, that's the, the hard part. I don't know that there even is a measurable way to do that. That would always be my desire, to determine when monies are allocated or spent, what's the return on investment for that expenditure. I'm more concerned about the future and what we do with the money that the city has committed to the, the T-Bid and improvements, and looking at a grander plan, or, or a plan for more broadly defining the priorities involved with those funds. And so I think this is a start, I'm supportive of it, but I would be more interested in a conversation about the larger amount of dollars that are left to consider, and what improvements might be necessary, and bring the greatest return to us as a city in terms of revenue enhancement.
Okay, Marlos?
Yes, I too strongly support this move and this project, and for the same reasons that we've already talked about, that this is the direction we want to go, investing in the product, and it's a start, and I appreciate it. And in fact, I was even concerned that I couldn't vote on this, because I have been a Morro Bay and Bloom volunteer, and I can guarantee you that they are going to keep that rose garden at the roundabout maintained, because they've done that for every project that they have taken on. And of course, my significant other is the president of the historical society, and I am quite familiar with the plan, so, and I found out that I, in fact, do not need to recuse myself, because I receive no financial benefit from my vote, but I do support it. Thank you.
Okay, great. I, I think I asked some tough questions in regards to where we're going on these, and I thought they were necessary questions, because they're, I think, factual, as far as the tree lighting, things like that. So I wanted to ensure that as we invest in this, that we achieve a different outcome, as an example, for the tree lighting. The $1,000 to the roundabout, I could agree to that. I still, I think, in, in generally, it could just go to the roundabout improvements, even though it's targeted as a specific rose garden. I think we should be more thoughtful in considering the drought that we've been in, and the drought-tolerant planting. Those things I would consider should be part of the makeup of how we landscape and, and do the, the community, but, you know, of course, that's, you know, an opinion of, of many, but from a city standpoint, we definitely need to be very cognizant of the use of water. I, I hate to say it, but I, I don't think I would support the $2,000 for Franklin, Franklin Riley Park. I would be more inclined for the $2,000, basically for historical markings, but as far as the planning and beautification and design of that, I think that should be a public process. It shouldn't be just at the whim of the historical society on how we're planning and developing a park that has a historical significant, but that should be a public process, just like we do with all of our designs, hearsay. So those are my comments, and willing to move forward.
May I ask a question? Would you be willing to reconsider if they brought the design back to whomever in the city we would want to have approve it, so that we have, the city participates in the process of the design?
Yeah, I think that's my point. I think it should be a public process, in which we do with all of our public spaces. I mean, it's great to have this, but, but I, as I said, my, my remarks, I think it could be great for the, the historical markings, which I think there are some, but if it goes to a specific design, it should be a public process. And those are my comments. However, we want to get through that. And if there's, either we can continue the discussion, or just take a motion?
Continuing the discussion, I wonder if we could condition it on the specific historical society beautification of Franklin Riley Park, on public participation in the development of the plan. That way, it, and I don't know what $2,000 buys, to be honest with you.
I don't either.
Such a small amount.
It really does.
But I don't think it's enough to even get too far, but it's a beginning, and if we condition it on broad public input, however they determine that that could happen, that would be one way to begin that process of understanding where we're headed, and maybe help mitigate some of the concerns that you have, which I do agree with, by the way. Drought tolerant, yeah, I get that, you know, and, and I am not an expert in, in plants, or I can't visualize the roses either, Scott, they might look, but we are into, you know, drought tolerant planning now, and I, again, I do concur that, I'd asked the question about that being the appropriate plant, so to speak. I don't want to get into the weeds, sorry, no, no pun intended, but I agree.
Carl, for once. Okay, so I just threw out that, I know we need to wrap this up, so there's an agreement on item number one for the $16,752 for that. There's agreement to the $1,000 towards the improvements for the roundabout, and then if, if council wants to just go ahead and move forward with the number three, I'm fine, I just threw out my statement in opposition to that, and willing to move forward. I know, Marlos, you made a suggestion that would that be, would I be in support of that if it came back? I don't see the, the value of 2,000 bringing us back a plan personally, which is some of my apprehension in this. I think it's more better use if, if there's just, do the historical modeling of the Franklin Riley itself, I think that could, but, but the whole design of the park, I think, is a, is a larger discussion, and it should be a public one. So I'll leave it at that, and if we need to make a motion, if people, if everybody wants to move forward with all three items, then I'm all for, you know, just, we can just go ahead and move forward, and I'll cast my vote accordingly.
Okay, I guess I will then make a motion.
And so, I'm sorry, maybe it'd be easier if we just do a motion one by one, if that would be, that'd be easier, because clearly, I would like to support, you know, two of the three, so if we could make a motion to approve item one, pardon me, in the staff report, for the lighting, that would be great. Could we do that? Start with that?
Sure.
So moved? So we have a motion to approve item one in the staff report.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember, Mayor Davis. The item number one is the lighting at the, at the cost of $16,752. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And then item number two was $1,000 towards the Morro Bay Boulevard roundabout improvements.
Move approval of that?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And then item number three. Any particular motion on that?
I move we approve $2,000 for the Franklin Riley Park beautification plan of the Historical Society.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries 4-1. Okay, great. And that concludes our, all three items for the special meeting. Is there any other comments to this? We're all good? Okay, with that, we can adjourn and we'll come back at 6 o'clock for our regular City Council meeting. Thank you.